All right, we'll call the meeting door. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, everyone. Tom, click the roll call, please. Tom is momentarily delayed.
Stephen, do you want to do a Tom impression?
You know, guys on his way in.
Kind of going to kick it to hand to do the roll call today. All right, Mayor King.
President.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Peshusta.
Present.
Helly. Posma.
Present.
Baker.
Your.
Baskin.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. I have number one's a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have number two's a motion approving our minutes from August 21st, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have number three, under recognitions and awards, we have several, the Welcoming Week proclamation. Brianna Broberg, is there Brianna Broberg here? Hey, you need to step forward and talk about the Welcoming Week and I can read the proclamation. Welcome, Brianna.
Thank you very much. Um, thank you all for, for having me. My name is Brianna Broberg. I am the Midwest Regional Manager at Welcoming America. Uh, Welcoming America is a national nonprofit, nonpartisan organization um, that works with members, local governments, and local nonprofits across the U.S., uh, many of which are right here in the great state of Minnesota, including the city of Austin. And, um, we work together to help develop and strengthen communities' policies and programming around immigrant inclusion and around welcoming and belonging for all residents of community. And Welcoming Week is our annual celebration, um, to help, um, affirm those beliefs and, um, to help community come together to celebrate, to have, um, different types of events, and to also share welcoming proclamations, like the one that the city has, um, graciously decided to issue for this year. Um, we're, we're really excited to continue our partnership with the city of Austin. Um, the city has been a member of Welcoming America for many years and has really been, um, a great, a great partner and a great example that we like to use to uplift to a lot of other folks in, um, our member network and also beyond. I, I know many of you got the chance to meet, uh, some delegates from Portugal that came to visit the city of Austin earlier this year. Uh, Welcoming America recommended Austin as a community that they would want to learn from and share with. That was an invaluable experience and, um, we're also really proud to share Austin's example in a number of other ways. I'm originally from Wilmer, Minnesota, which is a city that I think has a lot in common with Austin. And, um, I'm always talking about you all and uplifting the work that you're doing there. So I really appreciate you all having me here tonight, um, and for the proclamation that you're issuing for Welcoming Week.
Excellent. Thanks, Brianna. And you did the county board meeting today, too? Were you there?
I was, yes. Yep, that was, that was wonderful. So I've got a proclamation there as well. Yes.
All right, well, thank you. I'll read the proclamation. Thank you, Brianna. Whereas the city of Austin proudly recognizes the Welcoming Week National Event occurring September 8th through September 17th, 2023. And whereas this week, we honor the spirit of unity that brings neighbors together throughout Austin. During Welcoming Week, we invite all residents of Austin to join the movement of communities nationwide by renewing our commitment to our core American values and by acting in the spirit of welcoming. By working together, we can achieve greater prosperity and make our community the kind of place where diverse people from around the world feel valued and want to put down roots. And whereas regardless of where we are born or what we look like, we are residents united in our efforts to build a stronger community. By recognizing the contributions that we all make to create a vibrant culture and a growing economy, we make our community more prosperous and more inclusive to all who call it home. And whereas we encourage the business community, civic groups, other units of government, and community institutions to undertake initiatives beyond this proclamation to make our community a place of welcome for new and long-term residents alike. And whereas this will be a special week in Austin with a series of events hosted with collaborations within the business community, civic groups, other units of government, and other community organizations. It will bring diverse communities together to celebrate their unity and strong connection to Austin and with each other, while recognizing the benefits of welcoming newcomers to our community. And further, the city of Austin, Minnesota does hereby recognize that today and during Welcoming Week 2023, the value of ensuring that Austin is home to all and where we all belong and encourages all residents and institutions to greet and bring their neighbors together to participate in one or more of the Welcoming Week events taking place within our community. Now therefore, I, Stephen M. King, Mayor of Austin, do hereby proclaim September 8th through September 17th, 2023 as Welcoming Week 2023. Thank you. Thanks, Brianna.
And Sarah will get that proclamation to where it needs to go. Thank you. Also, under recognitions and awards, um, we have an art purchase award, special art purchase award. There's two city art awards different than this one, Bonnie and Tim Reitz. Uh, they have selected or want to present this, uh, art award to the city. Bonnie, welcome. Tim, welcome.
Thank you. Um, it's, uh, an honor to be here tonight, being the purchase award donors for the Austin Artworks Festival. I brought somebody who could hold the painting up for me. He comes in handy. Um, we want to thank the mayor, council, um, staff members, uh, city of Austin. The marvelous support that you give the Austin Artworks Fest- Festival is just amazing. And we're sorry Laura isn't here tonight. Oh my goodness gracious sake's alive. She's, uh, just so vital to the project. Does a wonderful job. And we also have the two new chairs with us tonight that you'll be hearing from. Jeff and Lisa do such a marvelous job. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Bonnie. Tim?
We, we enjoyed being the purchase award donors this year. It's a piece of artwork as chosen each year at, at the Austin Artworks Festival and placed in public places around the community. This is the 12th year of the artworks and over 14 place, uh, pieces have been placed in our community, such as the, uh, Hormel Historic Home, the Paramount Theater, the schools, McPhail, and the Nature Center.
Um, this year, we chose a wood assemblage by Mary Ann Snedick Wonderland. She's an artist from the cities and she's actually known as a barn historian because she goes to old abandoned barns, takes down the wood, and then makes, uh, barns in these, in this artwork. And she doesn't paint it or anything. She uses the wood as she finds it. So, uh, uh, we were very, um, interested in the way she did it. She had such a compelling story as an artist. And then Tim and I were reminded of our, uh, of God's land, uh, North Dakota, uh, as, as we chose this artwork.
We decided to ask permission of the city council then to put this artwork in the Bonnie Bass Reitz Con- Conference Room here at City Hall. Thank you so much for your consideration and your interest in supporting the arts.
Excellent. Thanks, Reitzes. We're happy to, to improve the Bonnie even that much better with that piece of art in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. We'll think of North Dakota every time we look at it. Uh, moving on to the third and final recognition award, we have the presentation of the city art award. Uh, presenting that would be Lisa Dunlop and Jeff Baldis, the chairs, co-chairs of the Austin Artworks.
So, good afternoon, councilmembers, mayor, and everyone else in the room. Great to see such a good turnout here tonight. I am Jeff Baldis, co-chair, Lisa Dunlop. And yes, we took over this last year and, uh, hopefully we'll continue to, uh, continue as co-chairs for the artworks festival. We are, uh, super pleased and excited to bring this piece of art with us tonight. This is the city purchase award. Uh, this was picked, chosen by two of your council members, Mr. Mike Posma and Mr. Baker. So I don't know if we, how this is done normally and...
I like the unveiling. I like this drama here.
So I think we should just do the unveiling now.
I like the drama.
Artist wrapped it up.
And the, the artist's first name is Love, right?
Artist's name is Love Cutie.
Yeah.
And she's from, um, she goes to Mankato State and in the Fine Arts Program.
And what's super exciting as well is she was in our emerging artist tent. So something new that we started this year is the emerging artist tent. And, uh, so they've been, uh, Katie Stromlin was working with these individuals to develop their skills in displaying art and how to do it. Um, I know a couple of, a couple of the things that we did is you can't sit in the back of your booth and, you know, look grumpy or be on your phone. You gotta be out there and try to truly tell this art. So, um, yeah.
Lisa, you unwrap presents like my mom.
No.
Rip that up.
Rip it.
Rip it up.
Take it off. Should add a round roll.
Yeah, I know it. That is beautiful. Posma and Baker, that spoke to you guys. Nice work. Very nice.
Councilman Baker, could you give us your deep emotional take on that?
That's outstanding.
No, really, I think it, I think Mike and I both, I won't speak for you, but it was really cool to, um, spend, to, just the way the emerging artists were recognized and organized. And that was kind of a cool part of the, the program. So well done.
That was beautiful.
We also, as long as we get the mic, we want to take just a minute and, uh, thank the city for its participation in the artworks fest. Um, you know, it truly is a community festival. Um, we got city people coming together and helping, helping. We got county people, we got businesses, we got tons. We have over 200 volunteers that come and help put this festival on. And I think it's probably one of the, no, I know it's one of the top festivals in the community. Um, so we again just want to thank because without your help and some of the needs, parking wreck is a big help with us in getting tables and chairs and picnic tables and all that good stuff. And we really appreciate it. And it's just great to see us all come together and work for a common cause. So, and real quick, then I'll leave you alone. We had over 10,000 visitors. Um, we had, Austin had TV coverage on KIMT, KTTC. The Herald did a couple articles. Uh, last 12 years, we've supported over 315 visual artists, um, 108 authors, 123 music acts, 36 demonstrating artists. Um, and all these things I really think help sell Austin as a great place to live and be. So with that, thank you.
Thank you for your hard work. That was excellently done. And the weather cooperated. The weather was beautiful.
Yeah, we should say, that's probably the best year for the weather.
Great weather, yes.
That was good.
Thank you, folks. We'll hang that with pride, uh, somewhere in the city building. Thank you. Uh, on to item number four is a motion for consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Under petitions and requests, item number five is resolution approving a contract with Asbestrol, uh, for asbestos tile removal in City Hall.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, I thought that was coming. Oh, okay. Um, we, let's get this one. We, we had a motion for the resolution on five.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Me, second.
Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Backing up a little bit, something that's not on the agenda that probably should be under recognitions or is our two new police officers are here. And, uh, Captain Clennan's going to present, uh, I'm sure, introduce Gentry and Tar, who I met today, and I'm sure they had a busy day.
Yeah. Good afternoon. Uh, this morning, the police department had the pleasure and excitement of, uh, swearing in two new police officers for the Austin Police Department. Gentry and Tar, who I'm sure will walk up here and join me at the podium.
And they, and they prepared a five-minute speech, right?
They've been pretty quiet today on the first day. See what happens tomorrow. Uh, so Tar Lar Pa, badge number nine David 140, uh, was born in Thailand. She lived there until November 2010. And, uh, then her family moved to the United States. She graduated from Worthington High School in 2017. 2019, moved to Austin and, uh, began Riv- Riverland Community College Law Enforcement Training shortly after that. Um, she, uh, she graduated the spring of 2023. She's got quite a bit of family here in town. And, uh, she and her husband live in Austin with their two children. Congratulations.
Thank you, Tom.
Here we have Gentry Silvers. Gentry is from the Spring Valley area. She attended, uh, Stewartville High School. And I don't know if this is a typo or not, but it says she graduated in 2021. She attended Rochester Community and Technical College Law Enforcement Program, graduated the spring of 2023. And, uh, she can, uh, continues to live in that Spring Valley area and she joined us this morning, um, as nine David 141. Uh, this is the first law enforcement career job for, um, both of them. Uh, we're excited to have them, uh, excited to get them through some training and, um, just a wonderful addition to the Austin Police Department. And, um, I can only keep my fingers crossed and hope that they're here for a long, healthy, successful career. So, um, I'm going to put them on the spot in case the council has any questions.
Love it. Gentry, what do you want to say to us? How was your day today, Gentry?
Uh, very stressful. There was a lot of stuff to do today. Um, get everything set up, you know, the swearing in this morning. It was all really stressful, but also very fun as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Look forward to you serving a long career in Austin. Appreciate service. Tar?
Thank you, guys.
I want to hear from Tar. No, Tar was going to say.
I think she got off the hook.
Tell us about her cute kids, those two adorable kids. You can, whatever you'd want, Tar. Tar's, the floor's yours.
What was your question?
How was your day?
I liked it. Um, it's a new experience and I, I enjoyed it. It was a little like, you know, tiring, but I enjoyed it. Yeah.
Awesome. And, uh, you had an okay time in your first training? It's in-house for a couple of weeks?
Yeah, they, um, they'll, they'll be attending two weeks of in-house training. Um, during that period of time, we get, uh, some gear and outfits together the best we can. Uh, they, they get, uh, one of the big things is just, you know, getting their email so they can access law enforcement programs and some patrol training courses and get started on some of the administrative things and learn the, the layout of the land and meet some of our officers. So two weeks from now, they'll be completing that. They'll be starting FTO, Field Training, with a, um, seasoned officer. And at this time, we're anticipating that to last 14 to 16 weeks. And, uh, we're not setting that in stone. We're going to try to go at their pace. Um, we recognize that, um, they come to us with no law enforcement, past law enforcement experience. So, um, we want to, we want to retain them and, and, um, make it, make it successful. And so we will, we will base that training on their progression and at their speed. So that's where we're heading.
Excellent. Thank you, officers. Thank you, Todd. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Welcome. All right, now we're moving on to item number six is a resolution setting public hearing for October 2nd, 2023 for fall assessments. Anne?
So moved.
Second.
Anne, do you say anything? Feel bad you didn't get to say anything. All right, Tom?
Just believe, Anne.
Member Peshusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number seven's resolution approving a letter of understanding with agriculture pollution innovation and grant application with ComPure Financial. Craig?
Uh, thank you, mayor members. Uh, before you tonight is a request from Ian Robach, which is, he's the CEO of Clear Water Nitrate Reduction. Also doing business as Agriculture Pollution Innovation LLC. Essentially, we're the fiscal host for a grant. ComPure requires it to partner with a city. And there's no cost to the city. He'll take care of the application. Um, he does look for, um, Woodstock waste and we would provide that for him for what we do from the city. As council members know, we do have a detailed assessment of all our tree removals. So it won't be any added burden for the city and hopefully, um, support a burgeoning business in the community. Mr. Robach is here this evening. Um, if he has other comments, he can either add them or if there's questions for council, he's happy to field those.
Excellent. Mr. Robach, any comments?
So I have no comments, but if you guys have questions.
Huh? Council, any questions on this?
I'm cool. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Tom?
Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
You bet.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Uh, item number eight's a motion approving $22,065 from a, from the 2023 contingency for emergency panel, electrical panel at the library. Julie?
Yes, mayor and councilmembers. Um, so in a routine inspection, we discovered that the lighting panel for our emergency lights at the library was dimmed. The inverter panel, um, needs to be replaced over original to the building. Um, we did get different bids and the lowest bid was with Fox Electric, number 22, $665. And we are requesting approval for, um, contingency funds to replace that emergency light.
Okay. Council, any questions for Julie? Looking for a motion. Item number eight.
So moved.
Second.
Hold on, is it 22665 or 22065?
Oh, sorry. It is.
It's written up here.
Mine says 22665. Hang on. Proposal, actually it's 23485. It's the, if you look on your documents, it's the first document after the memo. Fox Electric was the lowest. That was the updated bid for 2023. It is 23485.
Okay. With that, a new addition, I need a motion. So moved.
Second.
I've got a quick question for Tom, if I could. What would this put our contingency at for the rest of the year?
Close to nothing. I think it'd be down to around $10,000 for the rest of the year.
Thank you. We had a motion, if you have a second?
Yes, sir.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine's resolution accepting these donations of the city of Austin.
So moved.
And we got Julie, want to give credit where credit is due. We have, uh, Julie and Eric Schindler, $500 for the bike club, Austin Eagles, $300 for the pool, family fun night, and, uh, family of George Fet, a hundred bucks, uh, to the Austin Fire Department and weight room. With those, uh, donations, need a motion, a resolution to accept them.
Uh huh.
Second. Tom?
Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven, six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number 10's resolution accepting a volunteer fire assistant grant from the, uh, Minnesota DNR. Jim?
Uh, applied for with the permission of Mr. Clark and we were approved for $2,882 dollars, um, from the Minnesota DNR. This is a 50/50 matching grant. The other 50% will come out of, uh, 2023 budget, uh, requesting approval.
All right. Need a resolution, council?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number 11's a motion authorizing installation of camera equipment for the Austin Bruins at Riverside Arena. Stephen?
The NAHL is requiring some additional cameras for all of their, uh, hockey teams that they have throughout the league. That involves, uh, the Bruins to, or requires the Bruins to install a goal line camera and also a, a center ice camera. Um, I believe there is also, uh, additional cameras that will observe the bench. They'll help with managing any issues that occur during a, a hockey event. And it's just more cameras for more information, more, more ability for them to back up, double-check things, um, as a result of things that go on throughout the course of, of a hockey event. So, um, being that it's owned by the city of Austin, they have requested the authorization to install these cameras at their cost. Cameras are provided by the NAHL. The Bruins would install them.
Stephen, on these, is there, so obviously it's for the Bruins games. Austin youth hockey, that type of stuff, do they have access to at high schools as well as it's purely the Bruins?
I believe it's just run through Bruins software and Bruins website, to my knowledge, through the NAHL. So I don't believe it would be available to other entities.
Well, with that, need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12 is resolution approving a contract with SAE, SEH Incorporated for design services on the equalization digester at the wastewater treatment plant. Stephen?
We have two, uh, EQ digesters at the treatment plant. We, in 2022, we replaced one of the covers and now the other cover is due for replacement. Before you tonight is a proposal from SEH to develop the plans and specifications for this second digester cover replacement. We would then follow that up with bidding and, uh, develop the total project cost where we would then enter into an agreement with the Hormel, Hormel Foods for, to cover the cost of this project as part of the industrial plant. So there's a few more steps that will occur down the road, but this is the first step in, um, hiring, uh, SEH to complete the design consulting services for this project.
Questions, council? If not, looking for resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number 13's resolution authorizing grant funding with the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority. Stephen?
Yes, so the grant through our, uh, bonding bill is coming through. And this resolution before you is just to authorize staff to submit documents to the Public Facilities Authority so that they can get all, chick, get, get all the Ts dotted, Is dotted, and Ts crossed for the grant documents. So this is just approval to allow us to submit those documents.
For 14 and a half million, you write it however you want to. I'm on board.
All right, council, looking for resolution, please?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Item number 14's resolution approving a modified resolution for the annexation with Austin Township. Holly?
Um, the ordinance that was passed to, um, annex a section of I-90 previously, um, needs to match the initial notice of annexation to the township. So this is just a modification or amendment of our original notice. And the township is aware of the change.
Council, any questions for Ms. Wallace?
Holly, was this always kind of the plan that we'd have a broader and then come back? Or was it just something that if we do one of these again?
No, no, no. Uh, so it wasn't entirely clear to me in the, in the beginning until we talked to MINDOT that that parcel was wholly within the city. So we could have actually just done, uh, annexation by ordinance. By, by then, we'd already sent out a notice ahead, just not knowing the actual situation with the property. Since there's a couple of highways that connect with the interstate right there. Um, and it's very difficult to know without consulting with either a surveyor or other professional who handles the legal descriptions and annexations. So yeah, normally we would have just, uh, done both at the same time. With, with the broader legal description, but I, you know, so the, this, the state doesn't really care how we do it. They, uh, they say you can go back and annex some slivers of property, um, either by ordinance or some other method, depending on what the statute allows.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Holly. Looking for a resolution. Item number 14.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 15, uh, A, B, and C is a series of motions granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following locations. 15A is addressed as 1019 Eighth Ave, Northeast, the Graham Property.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 15B, address is 709 11th Avenue Southwest, the Wynn Property.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 15C, address 601 13th Avenue Southwest, the Wilder Property.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any citizens in the audience wishing to speak with the council that wasn't on the, things that weren't on the agenda? Mr. Sorjean, and then we'll take you second, sir. Tim, you want to step to the podium, please? Give us your name and address.
Hello, I'm Tim Sorjean, 505, uh, 11th Avenue Southwest, Austin, Minnesota. Thank you for hearing me tonight. Uh, a lot of you have heard me week after week, month after month, year after year. And I hate to come off as... And I hate to come off as redundant, but as the rules have changed and it seems like any kind of resolution has been put off for a year, it leaves a gap for a lot of people in there. And there's a detriment to the city and to the taxpayer that is, I don't think spoke, spoke of. And that is, when you go to Mayo Clinic, you are prescribed medicine, and if you don't take that medicine, then you're noncompliant. And so then they don't have, then they don't have to treat you. So you're locked into this. And that costs the taxpayers thousands of dollars a month. And to put that off for a year, when we did have regular task force meetings that were productive on other subjects, to have that stopped, I think is a disservice to the people that are caught in the middle. And I would ask that that be reconvened.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate your comments, as always. Sir, in the back row, you needed something to say. Name and address for the record, please, if you could.
Yeah, Scott Soderberg, twenty-four oh eight Sixteenth Avenue Southwest here in Austin. For those of you that don't know me, I was at KU S for thirty years. And the last ten years, I was the program director and operations manager and never really appeared before any of the councils before, but had a lot of knowledge of what, you know, happens in the city government. I'm very concerned about the proposed property tax increase. And with that being said, I think there's just some issues that, within the city, I believe they're in areas that I don't believe the city should be involved with, and that is property management. And the city has basically come down kind of hard, I think, on people that have rental property. You know, charging them a hundred and twenty-five dollars a year to have somebody come in and inspect the rental properties they have and then tell them that they need to do the repairs that may need to be done. I understand that. But the onus isn't ever put anything on the renter. Now, if you drive around Austin, I can show you many locations. I see tonight that you're cleaning up some of those, which is a good move. They may not be rental properties, but a lot of rental properties are in disrepair outside, just that the renters aren't held responsible to take care of the property outside. Their neighbors would have to look at it. In fact, my mother's home where it was, before she passed away, we called a number of times for the area that she lived in that was getting pretty rundown with the way things were in people's yards. And it was terrible to sit there and look at that all the time when her property was maintained very nicely and trying to keep your property up to where you can tax us on having nice property. But with the city being involved in, like, the new building that's going up in the area by the post office, getting one point five million dollars in our tax money to go there and feeling that they're subsidizing that as well for those people who live there. And how can these renters or landlords compete with something like that, new properties going up? How much tax abatement is on these properties, such as the Y and things like that? That in the time I feel, just like Torgeson Properties, with the Holiday Inn, had twenty-year, I think, tax abatement, then after twenty years comes up, they leave and it's somebody else's responsibility. And I feel at the time, when that abatement runs out, then we're just flat. We're level on the tax. It didn't really add because everything's gone up. And we see no real tax benefit, as that's been such a long period of time and so much has changed economically in our country. As far as that goes, you know, we can go to talk about city employees and stuff and realize everybody needs a good job. They need good employees. We did at the station for many years, had longstanding employees. And, you know, just some numbers that I heard about, as far as the last six year, the average city employee cost with salaries and benefits combined increased on average nine percent a year. I worked for thirteen years after it went corporate at the station without even seeing a raise. And yet, city employees get a nine percent a year over the last six years. And, you know, totals to about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year for these employees with their benefits and everything. And saying the catchphrase that, well, we need to pay well to keep good employees. That is true, but I know people that have applied for some of these jobs that would have been qualified. I never heard anybody saying that there was a lack of people applying for the jobs, and some of these people did not get the jobs. So I don't know anybody that turned down a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in a salary and benefit package to work. As far as going to, what's going on with the proposed increase? Eleven percent tax increase proposed when there's a large increase in tax dollars being transferred from the state of Minnesota to the city of Austin. And without that, apparently, it would be an eighteen percent increase, closer to that. Now, we always hear from you that, you know, it'll only be this much. Well, for years and years now, I've heard that, and each year, I'm taxed more and more. And it seems only at the time, but when you do multiple years, you see how much that adds up to what you got to pay. Being that we have a larger, older community in Austin on fixed incomes, how are they to continue to absorb this? I just don't understand it. I mean, I can look back and see some going, digressing a little bit back to the housing in Austin. The HRA, if you, if, for one person, I, I've been an individual for a long time. Forty-six thousand seven hundred dollars, and you're able, able to get subsidies from the city of Austin. I never made that at the radio station. I've owned four houses over my lifetime in Austin. I don't feel I should subsidize somebody making that much money, but I never made it, and I was able to buy a house. Sometimes we have to tighten our belts on our extra spending to save for what we want. I don't think that the city of Austin should be subsidizing people making this kind of incomes for their homes. I mean, you can do it. I did it. I think anybody can. And getting back to the property taxes, levy in two thousand eighteen was five point nine million. Now, the proposed twenty-twenty-four budget is nine point two. Six years, it's a fifty-six percent increase. That's what I'm saying. Year after year, I'm asked to pay more and more and more. And it's getting tougher and tougher to do that, because if I go to, you know, the government statistics that just came out, inflation has soared sixteen point six percent since twenty-twenty. Grocery prices increased twenty percent. Energy prices increased thirty-eight percent. And since July, prices have increased by three point two percent on average over the past twelve months. The outlook would suggest that this trend will continue in twenty-twenty-four. So for us to be looking at eleven percent tax increase, I don't know how we can absorb this as a community because we're just, I just don't think we're there where we can do that. Everybody's hurting. And I just hope that you aren't just listening to me, but you're hearing me, because not everybody's here to talk about this, and maybe they will. They need to. We have had a television station that abandoned this community. I see the papers here, which I'm glad to see. I worked at the radio station. I feel they've abandoned us, too. They don't have.
He's right there.
Well, they don't, I'm sorry. I'm, I don't care. I worked there. They don't have a news director. Usually, it's what we call rip and read. And they don't, they don't cover it like we used to, so people are informed of what's happening here. And I wish we were more informed. I don't like the fact that on television, some of these debates are not covered, but on channels that you have to have cable. What about people that don't have the income to have that cable, to become an informed electorate, to see these people and judge for themselves instead of what the media may want to portray each candidate? You know, you should be able to make your own decision by hearing from them and what they feel is what their platform is. And with that being said, I just, I just want to come forward and state that for the record about, you know, I know you guys got a tough job to do, but I hope you hear us and will consider that and try to make recommendations that we can get that lower. Because it's becoming an issue, like I say, for everybody I've talked to to be able to make their taxes every year as they turn around and it keeps going up. But thank you for your time, and I appreciate being here.
Thank you, Mr. Sorberg. It's a lot there. I can't respond to much of it, but I can just tell you that this, this city council and this city staff is very cognizant of levy dollars and how we spend our money. We don't want to burden anybody, whether that's landlord or tenant. Those are separate issues. But the city of Austin has been a well-functioning, well-managed city, you know, for all the years I've known it to be. And this council wants to see that through again. So whether it's eleven percent, it can certainly go lower, and I'm pretty darn sure it will go lower. But just hang in there with us, and we're doing the best we can to create a nice environment for all our citizens. Taxes are just part of the, part of the picture. So thank you for your comments. Sir? We're hearing it all today. Step up and name and address, please.
My name is Brian Prentis. I live at eleven oh three Fifth Place Southeast.
Ryan?
Brian.
Ryan.
Hi, everybody. I don't normally address the council, but good men do nothing, evil flourishes. So I, I was compelled to come here and talk about police evasion, police evading in pursuit and resisting arrest. If, if, I, I'm not sure what the penalty is if somebody tries to elude police. But can it, can a council make a law to increase the penalty as a discourager for people doing that? Because they're not only putting the police in danger, they're putting the public in danger. Yesterday, it was a hundred and thirty mile an hour pursuit on the interstate. Now, I wouldn't want that passing me. So a lot of people were put in danger, and people don't care. They're running way too often. And I don't know if it's a city ordinance or a county ordinance or how that could be implemented, but the great discouragement, that's what I came to talk about. But I really agree with that, man. The taxes in my house went from four hundred to seven hundred dollars, and you're at the breaking point. I'm on a fixed income. I don't want to see eleven percent. I appreciate you. If you can bring it down some, to throw that in there. But in general, I, I would love it if you guys could all consider it in your work session and find a way to make it a real discouragement for people. I mean, to add two years to their penalty, whatever they're running from. It might be only six months, but you're going to get two years because you ran. There's a lot of people would still be alive if they just got out of the car and got a lawyer.
Penalties are, penalties are dictated by the state statutes, so the legislation, the state legislation takes care of that. But Chief or Captain Clennan can probably speak. Austin has a policy of no pursuit in town to put anybody at danger, but the freeway is a different deal.
Particular situation you're talking about, I'm not familiar, so I suspect it was State Patrol, perhaps Mallory County. I, I do not know. Rest assured, it was not the Austin Police Department that was involved. We have a policy that's relatively stringent of police pursuits, and there's a very narrow band of reasons that we would pursue somebody. And so far to date, I, you know, to have a lengthy, lengthy high-speed chase, I don't really have a lot.
I encourage it. Go get them. I'm not worried about the, the safety problem above it so much. I'm worried about discouraging people from thinking it's a good idea to run.
And I, I agree with you. Unfortunately, this is not the venue for that. That would be your state legislatures and judicial brands of the state to make sure that penalties are, are severe and that prosecutors have tools and means to follow through with the sanctions, along with good police work to put the evidence together for them to do so.
I appreciate that, but if I make a phone call, they're not going to care about it. If you guys get together and make some combined effort to make something happen with the Sheriff Department or somebody, then, then we can maybe, at a state level at least, or maybe the whole damn country. Because the woman in Ohio didn't have to die. If she wasn't guilty of something, she should have got out of the car and talked to a lawyer, and she'd still be alive. Now, we're going to have a riot in this, this city of Ohio where we're going to be burned up because people are all inflamed about the idea I didn't have to get out of the car. You don't fight with law enforcement. You get a lawyer. Like, I, I'm just hoping to get that point across to where, I, I don't know who or what, like I say, if I make a phone call, it's not going to carry any weight. I've made a lot of them.
Thank you, Mr. Prentis. I can assure you that you dial nine-one-one, you're going to get a response. But thank you for your comments. I appreciate it.
And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, citizens addressing, I've done that. Honorary council, we do not have one in that seat, but guess what? Next meeting, we'll have An Lee on. Raise your hand. This is like a little reunion tour, because we got Denver Ritz back there, too, as our former honorary council. So An Lee will introduce him next meeting, but he will be sitting there next week at the, our next meeting at the DS. Uh, moving on to reports and recommendations. Craig?
Uh, thank you, mayor. Got a call from Representative with Congressman Finstad's office. He's going to be in town tomorrow and meet with them if there's anything members have that you'd like me to bring up, please let me know. September first, it now became illegal for someone to smoke cannabis in public spaces, so wanted to pass that along to folks. And otherwise, that's all I have.
All right. Mike?
Um, except to say that the HRA house that Riverland built has been sold, loses under contract, and will close soon if it hasn't already. So I love that partnership with Riverland. Going to be building another one, adding more housing supply to Austin.
Thanks, Mike. Jeff?
Uh, nothing. Thank you.
Jeff?
Uh, I have nothing, your honor.
I think briefly, two police-related items. Number one, just want to thank and congratulate the officers again coming. Obviously, do incredibly important work and, you know, put themselves on the line, so we very much appreciate that. And then Captain Clennan, Chief McKee can appreciate kind of your level-headed leadership around the school resource officers. I know the schools view them as incredibly, incredibly valuable assets. I know the officers themselves get to know the kids. They play a really productive role. And so I know there's some things that we've got to fix, but I'm glad that we're continuing forward with that, and thank you for your leadership.
Yeah, Chief McKee has been very steadfast in wanting to keep the SROs in the, in the school. He reached out to them the other day, met face to face with each of them to verify their positions. And, and they absolutely support leaving themselves there. I think they enjoy their job. They do a good job. They understand the new rules that, uh, have gone into place that limit some of their authority. And, you know, I, I have to say that it's disappointing to see that, but both of our SROs are level-headed, reasonable people that can adopt to those changes, and the rest of the police department is also going to be aware of it and able to support them in their mission to keep our public schools safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
Nothing, your honor.
Joyce?
Welcome to our two new officers and to An Lee, your council.
Joyce, we'll have a new neighbor. That's good.
Yes.
Uh, with, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn to our meeting.